Next up is School Showcase, McIntosh Middle School. And Sarasota High School presents Stride: Science Students Together, Reaching Instructional, Diversity, and Excellence. I'd like to welcome Karen Rose, Executive Director of Middle Schools. And she'll introduce Harriet Moore, Principal of McIntosh Middle.
Good evening, Superintendent Bowden, Chair Ziegler, School Board Members, Mr. Hardy, and Student Rep. Lilly Isody. Science students together, reaching instructional diversity and excellence. The Stride program exemplifies future doctors in the making. Florida State University's Stride is recognized for diversity and inclusion. The Charles and Marjorie Baransik Grant aims to foster science and medical careers. Ideally, students will return to Sarasota and serve our community. I invite you to follow Sarasota Stride on Twitter. You will see our students in action. Students are engaging in CPR, first aid certification, cell games, crime scene explorations, and much, much more. Sarasota County Stride is a middle school and a high school initiative. And it's my pleasure at this time to share with this program with our Executive Director of High School, Steve Cantiz. Steve?
Thank you, Karen. I first want to thank the Baransik Foundation for their generous financial support for the Stride program. Without them, this partnership would not be possible between McIntosh Middle School, Sarasota High School, as well as the FSU School of Medicine. So we want to thank the Baransiks for their generous donation, big supporters of our school district, of course. So the quality of the partnership lies in the unique program design and opportunities that our students will experience. The Stride program through FSU, it provides support for the partnership directly through their medical school. They not only provide guidance, monitoring, and support, but they also provide opportunities for students to visit the FSU Medical School for summer camps. And they also provide opportunities locally to connect with our FSU School of Medicine. Local medical students from the FSU School of Medicine and students from USF Sarasota Manatee, New College, Suncoast Technical College, they support and mentor the students in the Stride program. Stride provides guest speakers related to topics students are studying in the classroom, and students are invited to participate in a myriad of field trip opportunities in and around Sarasota to reinforce their desire to pursue a career in medicine. The level of support for our students from FSU is designed so that every Stride student is monitored all along the way for success. I would now like to introduce to you one of the most important support persons in the Stride program. Thessla Byrne Anderson is the founder. Come on up, Thessla. Thessla is the founder of Stride, Director of Pre-College Outreach, and College Outreach for the FSU College of Medicine.
Thank you.
Thessla?
Thank you, Mr. Cantiz. Good evening, Superintendent Bowden, School Board Members, Administrators, Teachers, Students, Parents, and all the invited guests. I welcome you on behalf of Florida State University College of Medicine. And with me this evening is the Director of Stride for the Southern Region, Ms. Jody Trul, and our Coordinator for Sarasota Stride, Cheryl Evans. It's exciting for me to have the opportunity this evening to just give a few brief comments about this amazing program. In 1993, I was hired to create this educational pipeline program that was legislatively mandated to exist, basically to address the shortage of minority and rural physicians in the state of Florida. So 25 years later, and eight counties later, with Sarasota being the most recent expansion, we have developed quite an innovative and successful program. If I was to summarize the unique features that I find most beneficial to the students over the 25 years that we have been in existence, I would say that the top priority, number one, is having buy-in from the Superintendent, the School Board, and Administrators at the schools where we reside. Number two would be working with the schools to select a cohort or a group of students that are like-minded, that are inspired by science, that are interested in medicine and healthcare, and work with those students from the eighth grade through 12th with the progression of advanced science courses that we have created for the program. Thirdly is to include pre-med and medical students in the classroom, not only to assist with instruction, but to facilitate small groups and to also be the role models for the students. Fourthly is the involvement of the Coordinator and Director on a continuous basis, their oversight, they provide intervention, enrichment, and support to these students from eighth grade all the way to 12th. And finally, I would say engage in activities that we provide that was mentioned by Mr. Cantiz earlier with the, we also add public speaking, we have professional and leadership development, and educational field trips, as he mentioned. So all of these things inspire students to want to remain in the program. We have great retention and the successful outcomes we have of them become a physician, scientist, and working in other areas of the STEM field. So I would like to thank you again for this partnership, and I look forward to the results and the outcomes that we will be seeing in the years to come. Thank you.
I know it was a long time to wait for me to come up, but here I am. Madam Chair, Superintendent Bowden, and all of our members, and Ms. Isada. I'm so glad to be before you tonight. So much has been said about this incredible program, so I have a few things to say later on, but right now, I want you to be able to see the students in action. So we're going to show a brief video, and it speaks volumes of this amazing program.
Hi, my name is Nick Agila. I'm a third-year FSU Medical Student, and I'm here today to speak with these students about how I've, my journey and how I've got to this point of Medical Student, and then I'm going to kind of show them just a few facts and how to do certain exams, like the ear, nose exam, how to take blood pressures, and how to do some reflexes.
The goal of Stride is to take students at an early age who are interested in the health profession and mentor them and give them the resources that they need and the education that they need to guide them into that career.
Well, we are really excited about the relationships that we've developed with our colleagues at Florida State University School of Medicine, Ms. Thessla Anderson, who was the pioneer of this Stride program.
We reach back into the schools. We start in the eighth grade and go all the way up to the 12th grade. And this program was designed to address the need of the shortage of minority and rural physicians in the state of Florida.
We're lucky enough to have partners like the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation that brought this to us, and it aligns with our Superintendent's goal of getting our children college and career ready.
Ms. Cheryl Evans is the new Coordinator for Sarasota. She jumped in full throttle and has just been amazing in terms of making sure that the kids have their activities, that they have the field trips, that the speakers are on point.
Hi, guys. So, thanks. I like applause. So, my name's Amanda Meyerberg. I am a sports psychology consultant.
She's part of a team, just the way that I am, just the way that the teacher is, just the way that the principal is, the EDs at the school district, the FSU team. We all work together as a team to benefit the students.
There you go. And move it up.
Raise your hands. How many beat your last score?
I got the same thing.
Okay, if you got the same thing, you can raise your hand, too.
I find when you relate to anyone, that's the key thing, that relationship, and showing that you care for them. Anything with that's going to help that build that relationship and really help them understand that we want to see them succeed.
Like, this is the front, this is the cornea. Remember learning the cornea? So the back, you kind of go to the back and you kind of tweak, pull the tissue away so that the optic nerve, that's like tough little cord, is sticking out.
I went to a very small school, and we did not have any of the kind of resources that I'm seeing here today.
Yeah, we're cutting off the fat and muscle to get the eye down to like a small circle so we can dissect it further.
I like this class because you get to like work, like, and, I don't know, you just get to like work with cool stuff.
It's a bunch of hands-on experience.
Stride has done an amazing job of providing a curriculum, resources, mentors, coordinators to support that goal. So I have the privilege of teaching them on a daily basis following the curriculum, but then that outside support from FSU is very visible and very apparent on a weekly basis.
They're introduced to a lot of real-world experiences, and I think that as a student is very helpful because it's nice to be able to apply your knowledge that you're learning in school to the real world.
So when students have an opportunity to interact with professionals or college students who are close to them in age, and they're talking to them about how to handle stress and how to cope with, you know, having a lot of classes and how to manage your schedule, and to talk to them about study skills and the expectations, they really listen to that and grab a hold of it.
What does optic nerve feel like? Can I come?
Like hard.
Isn't that interesting?
It's outstanding to see a student start as a freshman and really not know where their life is leading them. And then, most of my students, I have all the way through high school, and by the time they become seniors, they know exactly what their path is, they know what schools they want to go to because they know what they want to go into.
And they become leaders in the school. And not your typical students, not your typical leaders always, but they have definitely rose to that occasion and created a buzz. And they'll have each other now. So that tribe, that 15, they're real first to go straight through here in Sarasota County. And so there's something very special about them that when they graduate, they will be the first to go through all five years, and I can't wait to see where they'll end up.
Stride!
So without further ado, I'm so excited about this, and, you know, I'm trying to hold myself together without start talking. But we have some really special people to bring up to you now. Those who are really involved and are participating in the program. We'll invite a couple from, the teacher and student from McIntosh, and also then from Sarasota High School. So first, starting with McIntosh Middle School, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Jayden Latimore, who is one of our Stride students. And with her is Ms. Vicky Vera, who is the Stride Teacher for McIntosh Middle School.
Good evening, School Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Bowden. My name is Jayden, and I'm an eighth-grade Stride student at McIntosh Middle School. When I first heard about the program, I was so excited to learn more about it. My older sisters both wanted to pursue a career in the medicine, and they were always practicing and studying with me. So when they hooked me up to the blood pressure cuff and used their stethoscopes on me, I was hooked. One of my favorite aspects of Stride are the hands-on activities. So far, we have dissected a tilapia, used DNA extraction to catch criminals, moved our muscles as we learned their names, extracted our own DNA, and pricked our fingers to test our blood type. And we have learned the history of medicine, the anatomy of the body, types of blood, parts of the cells, cell division, the dimensions of wellness, how to use a stethoscope, otoscope, and test reflexes. Every day in Stride is interactive with Ms. Vera. We're never, ever bored. The mentors from FSU and USF are so valuable to us as young students. Our mentor Elizabeth spends every Monday and Wednesday with us, and she is so sweet and kind. She jumps in and helps us when we don't even ask, and she knows how to explain things in a way we understand. Elizabeth is always there when we need to talk and can cheer you up when you need to smile. We know we can always reach out to her and that she will be there for us as we mature. Another benefit of Stride class is getting to meet so many medical professionals and hearing them talk about what they do every day and their experiences. For example, last week, Ms. Cheryl invited an acupuncturist to speak to our class. She showed us some of the acupuncture points on a patient, the equipment she uses, and she explained the benefits of her career. When a dermatologist visited, he showed us videos of a surgery and interesting skin conditions. We watched. Some of our other speakers were the CEO of Florida Cancer Specialist, a Coordinator of Clinical Research Trials, a Skin Cancer Nurse, and a Rheumatologist. I feel so blessed to have been chosen to be a part of the Stride class, and I'm thankful that Dr. Moore and the FSU staff have made it possible. Not only am I learning about the medicine, the medical profession, I have made new friends and have learned how to interact with new people and professionals.
Good evening, Members of the Board and Superintendent Bowden. My name is Vicky Vera, and I am the proud teacher of the eighth-grade Stride class at McIntosh Middle School. As I reflect on this school year, I can't help but to smile as I recall the extraordinary experiences that have impacted our students so far. As our classroom teacher, I've been able to dispel the age-old question of students everywhere, so why do I have to know this? When we introduce a unit or teach a lesson, I can only teach concepts and lead lab activities, but now I can bring to life by tying it to real-world experiences from professionals. It is a profound moment when a medical student speaks about the importance of knowing medical terminology after assigning them Medical Terminology Mondays, or when the Youth Conservation Center uses anatomical language students have recently taught. Our DNA unit provided to be a success when we applied our knowledge at the USF Moat Marine Lab as we used extraction to catch criminals. My mentor Elizabeth Billings, who is an undergraduate biology major, tells the students often that they're developing interactive science notebooks or something they will refer to often in college and how she is learning some of the very same things in her classes. But I believe the greatest impact Stride has on our eighth graders is the bond they've developed that is unusual in the world of middle school students. They come from diverse walks of life, they have different hobbies and interests, participate in different activities, and have a diverse group of friends. Now, they have one common interest and one common goal. They will share the Stride experience together as they continue to learn about each other and develop a bond with their classmates. They will learn together, study together, go on class trips together, have served the community together, graduate together, and one day, come back and mentor new Stride students together. And I truly believe that this will change the entire course of their lives. Thank you.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Jones. I am the proud Principal of Sarasota High School. And you all being educators can certainly understand dilemmas and very difficult educational choices. It was about a year ago that I received a phone call, and let me just help you get into my shoes and understand what a quandary I was in. I was approached by the Florida State University College of Medicine, and they proposed this idea, asking, "How would you feel about if we came to your campus, provided an opportunity to inspire people to go into the medical profession, particularly underrepresented groups? We will provide all of the funding, we will provide fantastic labs, field trips, mentoring, tutoring, opportunities galore." It's a yes or no decision. Obviously, I'm being facetious. How many times does an opportunity like this fall in your lap? Well, I am so grateful that it did. And this is the inaugural year at Sarasota High, as it is at McIntosh, but the unusual thing this year is we're taking a group of ninth graders who didn't have the eighth-grade experience. So I'm honored to introduce two fantastic people from our version of the program. Helen is a student, she's going to speak first, followed by the amazing Mrs. Brown, who will speak afterwards. This is Helen.
Good afternoon, Sarasota County School Board Members. It is an honor to stand in front of you representing the wonderful Stride program. I am pleased to be part of the first class at Sarasota High School and feel so blessed to have gone to McIntosh Middle School where it was introduced. To be honest, Stride was a large part, the deciding factor, when choosing which high school to attend going into my freshman year. Stride is an amazing opportunity for all of us. It helps guide us into what we want to do when we grow up. It is such an advantage for me, as I launched my career in healthcare after high school, to take courses that are focused on the knowledge and skills I will need in the near future. Being a well-rounded student is important. However, focusing on areas pertinent to my future make my educational experience more meaningful and interesting. A lot of young people hope to become nurses or doctors, but in a typical high school scenario, students don't get the background insight and depth of focus on the true demands as well as opportunities in the various fields of health science. Stride is different. We have major advantage over other students because we are gaining unique experiences with guest speakers, field trips, and real-life communication with medical professionals in all different areas with various levels of experience. We get to talk to college students just starting out and to med students who are just beginning to be doctors. We meet students close to graduation, finishing their residency and fellowship programs, as well as professionals that have been out and working for more than 20 years. They give us insight that is so valuable. Everything from memorizing medical terminology to getting no sleep, which is okay, as well as dealing with all kinds of patients. They share the details and provide guidance, which helps us towards our careers, no matter what they will be. This is what makes Stride different, and this is why it matters to all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. The Stride program offers students a unique opportunity to gain insight and experience into the pursuit of a career in health sciences. Our students share common interests and goals for their future, which cultivates a unique dynamic in the classroom. Through the curriculum, we have the ability and resources to focus on information that will serve them well as they pursue careers after high school. Our main objective is to capture and hold their level of interest, excitement, and desire to become leaders in the medical field. We help to build the vision so that they can keep the vision alive. Not only do we focus on the knowledge base necessary to study medicine, but we also have numerous resources available. The partnership with Florida State University College of Medicine offers the students opportunities to explore various careers related to healthcare, learn firsthand from mentors who are pursuing careers in medicine, and develop relationships with healthcare leaders in our community. These students are gaining essential transferable skills as they communicate and interact with everyone involved in the program. While students are engaged in the academic curriculum, they also experience personal growth through professional development activities on a regular basis. Our Stride students will have such an enormous advantage as they work their way through high school and create their own path for their future. Not only will they be fully aware of all the opportunities available, but they will also have a team of advocates, mentors, and teachers who will help set them up for success down the road as they reach their goals. Thank you.
So thank you again for this opportunity, just to present briefly about this amazing and magnificent program. Want to give a quick shout-out to two groups. First of all, we've got a number of the Stride students who've joined us here tonight, so thank you all for being here. And also to Kim Stocker from the Education Channel for helping us put that video together. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Kim. Always does such a phenomenal job. I just have a few thank-yous and something that I need to share with everyone here. I've been trying to speak and not weep because when I'm happy, I cry. But this has been a dream for me. Six years ago, I started at McIntosh Middle School, and I had a dream. And that dream was to create an environment that would be unique and an incredibly unique opportunity for learning for students. We wanted to look at science and industry in all aspects. I think my staff says, "You have too many encores." But, you know, to feed the needs of our students and to prepare them for tomorrow and our future, we need to have as much as we can. So starting out with our STEM A squared, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, arts, and agri-science, I built another magnet, not knowing what was coming, but knowing what I wanted, which was a medical component to McIntosh Middle School STEM program. And we started with a biotech class last year, and I knew in my heart of hearts that that medical program was going to come to fruition. And as the students have shared with you, we are so blessed that this just kind of came and sat on our laps. And I wanted to thank a few people because it's important to know this also. When the students complete high school, they will continue on in the Stride program with Florida State University. Florida State University. I just love to say it, it just rolls off so beautifully. Don't you agree? I want to say thank you to Ms. Thessla Anderson, whose brainchild this is, and I want to give her a round of applause. Because without your brainchild, my dream wouldn't have come to fruition. So I'm thankful for that. And for Jody, who has run all over the state of Florida and who was instrumental, and we were running like bandits last year trying to get all the students involved. I also want to thank Karen Rose, who called me one day and said, "Hey, I remember you talking about wanting a medical component at your school." And I have this document from, you know, the Baransik Foundation about the Stride program, and I'm like, "Tell me about it." And that was it. We were done, it was on, and we were moving forward. I also want to thank Steve Cantiz, who was also a part of this and a partner with this with Sarasota High School, and my colleague, David Jones, who's a partner beyond what any of you can imagine. And what we're building now between McIntosh and Sarasota High School is a really, really incredible and unique marriage for our children to be able to continue on with the passions that they have, like agri-science and FFA, and of course, Stride. I'd also really like to thank the Baransik Foundation for thinking it not robbery to do something like this for our children in this community. It is going to be a milestone, you can bank on it. And then I want to thank our teachers, who have been phenomenal, and Cheryl Evans, who just jumped into this. And I'd like all the Stride students to stand, if you wouldn't mind. And I'd like you to give them a round of applause. And they're real special to me because I've known them since they were sixth graders, and, you know, they're moving on. And I am so proud of you, and thank you for making me look good. Thank you so much. And now, if you have any questions, Mr. Jones and I will be happy to answer whatever we can, and we do have our experts here, too. Thank you so much. You all may be seated.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Wow. Well, you know, I was, I had the experience of attending your banquet back in the fall, and I really didn't know what I was going to or what I was going to see, and I was just like blown away. This truly is a pipeline to real-world experience. And I dream and hope that someday we will not have a 45-minute class. We will have more project-oriented classes. And this really is going toward that. And you all are to be complimented. Ms. Anderson, Florida State, Karen Rose, Harriet Moore, a sparkle, like many, few sparkles sometimes that I've ever seen. David Jones, what you're doing at Sarasota High is, I mean, just in this and in other endeavors is just, you know, mind-boggling to me. But you all are just, this is so exciting because we really need students to get involved at an earlier age. Dr. Bowden talks all the time about getting your career on target in middle school, and people laugh at me when I say that to them. They go, "No, no way." And I just see this as, you know, being such a smart thing to do and such a good thing to do. But the experience that you have with knowing what you want to do and where you want to go is just such a life-changing event. So I thank all of you, I thank you for, I thank Cheryl Evans for your exemplary work. Thank you, Cheryl. And all the others, because this is the way of the future, I believe. And you stumbled on something that we really need to implement in other areas and other interests. So thank you all. It's exciting, and I look forward to hearing more great things coming up. Good luck.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
I never thought I'd want to go back to middle school. But it really sounds so exciting. I think I really would have enjoyed middle school if I went to McIntosh Middle School and was in the Stride program. In fact, I'm going to have a talk with my grandson. He's going to go into eighth grade next year, maybe. But I think it was interesting having you all here after we had the elementary kids with their, you know, everyday counts. I can't imagine what your posters would have looked like. I mean, I would imagine, is there anyone there that has ever missed more than five days of school in the whole year? I mean, I would think you would want to be there every day because every day is so important to everything you're doing. And to say, "Well, I'm going to go into medical," and everybody would say, "Oh, yeah, you're going to wear the doctor." But I see from what you were talking about, it's so many fields that could be opened up to you. And to have these, and I think that's one of the things they're learning in middle school. It isn't just being a doctor or being a nurse. There's all these technicians and doing DNA, criminology, all these other things you can learn. It is just amazing. And I truly am, I'm jealous, because that's not what I had. But I also think that this is an experience, you know, a time when we can all sing kumbaya with our legislators, because this is a time when the legislators truly got it right. They worked together, you know, they found a need and a way to fix it. And, you know, so they're working with public education, they're working with our university system, you know, to bring healthcare to our underserved constituents. system, you know, to bring healthcare to our underserved constituents and to ignite these kids in, in the process. I don't think that was what their goal was, but it truly, I don't think they ever expected to see what we saw tonight in these students. And, and I'm just so thrilled. And we're going up there tomorrow and Thursday. We'll tell them. We will tell them that, "Keep the funding coming on this program."
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker?
I don't want to reiterate, but I want to tell you what a fantastic partnership. This is one of the best partnerships I've heard. And we have a lot of partnerships. And thank you all for the students. I'm so impressed by the students that came up and spoke. The poise and the way you spoke, I mean, fantastic, the two of you are. As well as our leaders, our school leaders, they are great speakers as well. But it's very heartwarming for me to see that where we're moving this district. And by starting something, this program is opening up a whole new world for our youth. So I thank you all very much for what you do and how hard I know you work in order to make our students a success. And I thank you both, David and, sorry, Mr. Jones and Dr. Moore. Forget. I thank you both for your dedication and commitment to our students and our district. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson?
We have a lot of good-natured ribbing up here about the premiere of University of the, University of Florida and Florida State. So, but seriously, Ms. Anderson, that phone call that you made to Mr. Jones was incredible. I mean, it fosters a feeder program between the middle school and the high school, which is sorely needed. It helped open up career education to all these students here, sorely needed. You and the Baransik Foundation have touched our district and our community and our students in multiple ways that, that these students have no idea how much it's going to affect them for years to come. And so, Ms. Anderson and the Baransik Foundation, I do want to truly say thank you very much for all that you've done for our community.
Dr. Bowden?
We do rib each other on quite a regular basis, but when you talk about the partnerships that we have, the College of Engineering from the University of Florida and the College of Medicine at Florida State University, but our local foundations that really make it happen. You take both of those initiatives, neither one would have happened without the foundation community making that, those connections with our school districts. I want to say something to the students. You've made quite the commitment and I want to commend you for it. I know that there were other students who were offered this opportunity. They weighed the opportunity and said, "Maybe that's not a commitment that I want to make." And so, you've committed yourselves to this. Sometimes you have to just say yes. It wasn't hard, was it, Mr. Jones, when an opportunity presented itself? But as students, I know you have options. There are other programs throughout our district, but you weighed your options and you said, "This is for me." And we look forward to watching you through graduation. And there's a huge investment and we want you back. And I talk to your parents on a regular basis and what they say in the area of workforce development is we want our kids back after graduation. And Florida State University and their College of Medicine has a partnership that will take you not only through your undergraduate program, through your medical studies, but you have opportunities to do your medical residencies. Right here, there's a beautiful new clinic right on Martin Luther King in Newtown. And so, we hope that we are part of your present, but we hope that we're also part of your future. So thank you for saying yes to this wonderful opportunity.
I feel like we could have a whole workshop on this particular topic. I mean, there really is just such a tremendous amount of opportunity with this and I'm, I'm very excited. And I'll try to be succinct because I know there was already a lot said and I'm sure you guys want to move on. But truly, you know, a couple of things that I try to take away is, to me, this is a game changer when it comes to differentiating us, whether we talk about within, inside Sarasota County school districts and the schools that are offered, but all around the state. And so, I'm very excited to see what this model does because it integrates a number of things. Both, I love the feeder schools working together on a program where they can continue and there's continuity. But it also exposes students, and this was said, with, with the certain age ranges and peer groups, so they can see this various phases of that commitment and, and recognize the value of the application. And I just, I think it's amazing. And not only just that, also in the aspect of different career opportunities. So I am very excited and grateful for the Baransik Foundation and Ms. Anderson for your work 25 years. You said that and I didn't take that lightly. I mean, to think about when something was done at the state level and then you had to really grind and work hard to get it off the ground. So that is a testament to your work that you've done. I, I'm very excited. I can see the passion both between Mr. Jones and, and Dr. Moore. But also, Ms. Vera, you're, where are you? Your facial expression, I couldn't help but notice it and the pure pride and, and when you heard them speak, your students speak about that. So I'm just, I'm very excited to see where this goes. I look forward to keeping up with it and, and making sure we see where it goes and also expanding it onto other elements. But thank you very much. Thank you for sharing. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you.
I need to make a quick announcement. I forgot to mention...
The microphone?
You can come on up here.
...really so important is that our medical school is the first in the nation to develop their first bachelor's degree program. So we now have a Bachelor of Science in interdisciplinary medical sciences. So the students, once they graduate from 12th grade that decide to come to Florida State feeds into their college-level program and they could be part of our bachelors. So we go from middle school to medical school. So our bachelors, masters, PhD and MD.
Wow. No, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.